We'll call to order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council Meeting for September the 7th, 2021. The council should have the minutes of the Committee of the Whole from August 17th, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, is there a move to approve?
Aye.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Lee County Youth Development Center Board, Mayor Pro Tim Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have one vacancy. Term begins October 1, 2021, and ends September 30, 2025. Incumbent and penis are three full terms. I would like to nominate Dolly Marshall.
Second. Have a motion and a second for Dolly Marshall. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and we'll validate that later on in the agenda. Environmental Services and Public Works Complex Presentation. City Manager.
All right. This evening, we're going to have City Engineer and Engineering Services Director Allison Fraser make a presentation to you about the new Environmental Services and Public Works Complex. We've talked a little bit during budget meetings, both during the biennial budget process and mid-biennium about it, but we are getting close, and she will talk through that a number of bids have either been submitted or are coming due this week. And before we come to you with major actions to spend in the $15 million to $20 million range, I thought you might like a little more in-depth presentation on it tonight. We also have present both department heads, Tim Woody with Public Works and Katrina Cook with Environmental Services, and they're here and be happy to answer any further detailed questions. So we're just going to do an overview and go from there, just to give you some information. We can always provide more later. I do think the one key thing, this is very important to do this, nothing happens with the Boykin Community Center project in our future phases without moving Environmental Services and Public Works. The other thing I've been very clear on is our Fleet Services Building, and not to steal Allison's thunder, was built in the 50s. And some of you have toured through that, and it's not in its finest condition, and our employees that work there that maintain seven, eight hundred pieces of equipment need a bigger facility and a much improved facility to do their work. So you'll see some fine photos of its current condition, and I'm also looking forward to getting our trucks that start up at four o'clock in the morning and five o'clock and six o'clock away from some residential that has since been built around this complex. We preceded all of that, but now that a lot of residential, a lot more residential is built around it, we're starting to get a few complaints about our nice sounding vehicles early in the morning. So Allison.
Thank you, Megan. And you stole a lot of my thunder, so you know.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for this opportunity to present a little bit of information on our new Environmental Services and Public Works facilities. As Megan mentioned, our existing facilities, just by way of orientation, is located, it's kind of nestled, as I say, between the Boykin Campus and North Donahue Drive. It is surrounded by apartment complexes, there's some townhomes, some cottage homes all around the facility. It's just north of Martin Luther King Drive and near Auburn Amy Zion Church. As Megan mentioned, the Fleet Building was built in the 50s. The Environmental Services and Public Works Complex buildings were constructed in late 97, early 98. So they're relatively new facilities. The site is about nine acres for the whole campus. Public Works houses about 50 employees. Those employees are the ones who do construction, they do maintenance, they do the right-of-way maintenance, maintain our facilities, landscaping, and sustainability. Also, in the Public Works Building and the warehouse are traffic items. We have some signals, and all of our traffic inventory is still down at the Public Works Complex. Environmental Services Department has about 50 employees in the solid waste, trash, recycling, animal control, and the Fleet divisions. And they're housed actually in two buildings. Environmental Services is up the hill, and Fleet is down low. The buildings occupy, Public Works is about 10,000 square feet, just to kind of put it in context, and Environmental Services is approximately 4,700 square feet, and Fleet's about 8,500 square feet. And between the two departments, they share a single pole barn. So I just want to show you a few pictures of the existing facility. What you see, we've morphed, and I say we, you may remember when engineering and Public Works was one, so I still think I'm Public Works. So when I say we, I do mean that in every sense of the word. So we've morphed the site over the years. So what you're seeing is the pole barn. We store the equipment and vehicles. We've just kind of made room for wherever we can get them. It's a largely gravel area that's outside of the Public Works Building. Most of the crew trucks and the division maintenance trucks are outside of the building. We also store some other things under the pole barns. Also down at the complex currently is our fuel station. That fuel station is actually, we actually built it with the building. We've got Environmental Services. And since the reorg of 2018, we added landscaping to our Public Works crews. So what you see, we've made some room to store some of our landscaping materials and a Conex box or two to also store some materials. That's inside the Public Works Warehouse. To the left, you see, traffic stuff. It's a lot. Traffic signals, our crews, the staff that manages our traffic section. We have, most of our work area is still at Public Works, so we've got signals and controllers. Our sign inventory is there. And then on the right-hand side is what you see with the rest of the space. So it's not quite half and half. The Public Works Department has about two-thirds of the space, and traffic consumes about a third. And as Megan mentioned, we've just made it work over the years. We also do welding and some wood shop in this area. And one interesting thing, and I'll kind of point it out with this pointer, what you see, this area was actually space that has been built out since 2018. When the reorg happened, some additional crews went to this building. So we built three offices up top and three offices down low, so we had more room for our staff. And this is Fleet Services. One of the, I'll say, one of the most important components of this relocation is Fleet Services. And if you've been to Fleet, you know I say that. We have about 756 pieces of equipment and vehicles that our mechanic service. They average about 223 work orders every month. So they're busy, to say the least, and the conditions are a little bit cramped for space. But again, they've been making it work. This is inside one of the bays. This is actually our new truck, and they were doing a little bit of work to it. But as you can see, right now, the space is such that the garbage trucks don't fit. I was down at the facility a few weeks ago, and they had a fire truck inside this exact bay where the new collector is. And the ceilings aren't high enough for them to raise the vehicle up, so it's almost like it's wedged in there. And so just a few other pictures. And then, when vehicles are finished being serviced, there are a few parking spaces along Donahue, which is what you see here. So they simply park them out front, and if it's your department, they call you, they say your vehicle is ready to be picked up. So it's just really not in a secure area. So that's just a little bit about where we are. Our staff does an amazing job, the mechanics, being able to maintain all of the equipment and vehicles in such a tight space. So where are we going? If you remember some months ago when we purchased this property, the new site is off of Wire Road. It's just west of our Technology Park West, just a little bit west of GE. That's this building right here. That's GE. So we're just next door to GE. It's about 65 acres, and we're just northeast of Beehive Road. DNJ's office complex is right here, just for context. But about 65 acres. We will consider, or we are presenting this property for annexation and conditional use to the planning commission on Thursday, so we're hoping for favorable results with that. And then it will be to you in a few weeks. So how did we get here? We hired HOAR Program Management to assist us in the programming of this site. It was the first time that we've used a program manager. Megan and I had pretty extensive conversations early in this project, and it was, it's been a really good experience. HOAR helped us with our consultant selection. We hired Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, and we've been moving forward. And HOAR is, they're really, they've really been doing a good job for us, so very, very pleased with the partnership that we've established with them.
Real quick, Allison, one of the reasons, though, to hire a program manager is we've got only X amount of staff and a lot of projects, and we are looking toward using them. The university uses this model effectively, and this is a project that we were trying this on to speed up some projects and to keep them on task. And this allows our staff to manage this consultant, who then chases down everybody else, and it's been effective to date, and you'll see that on some more projects.
Yes. So this is an overview of the site, and I'm going to zoom in. Don't panic just yet. So it's a site. It's about 65 acres, as I mentioned. We're using about half of the site. And what you're seeing on this layout is the complete program. So it's the full-size building of Environmental Services, Admin, and Fleet. It's the full size of what would be Public Works. It's also showing the location of a fuel station, so an ultimate build. What it doesn't show would be maybe a future recycling center, any stockpile areas. We've talked about an area for a nursery, some landscaping materials. But again, we've got about 30 acres left to do that. So the Public Works Facility is shown at the ultimate design at about 52,000 square feet, and that includes two pole barns. Environmental Services is approximately 44,000 square feet with a single pole barn, and the Fleet Services Building is approximately 35,000 square feet, and they have a wash building outside. Based on the code, we will have emergency generators for each building. We will do improvements to Wire Road. We'll have gravel areas around the backside of Public Works. Also in the Public Works space is the space for the traffic engineering signals and signs. All of that inventory that's currently at Public Works will go to this new facility. And the site also accommodates design for a fuel station. One of the things we did with the programming was to do the ultimate design. And that's what we, we didn't start that way, but that's how it's ended up. But we won't, I'll talk a minute, in a few minutes, about how we plan to build it to save cost. So just for reference, this is the Environmental Services area. When you come into the site, the first building you'll encounter is Environmental Services and Fleet, and those buildings are connected. And then the Public Works Department will be in the back, which has an area for circulation for large trucks, deliveries, that kind of thing. Staff areas, the staff areas here nestled between Environmental Services, and they're not two departments. So when I say Environmental Services and Fleet, it's just so you distinguish between the two buildings. They have a parking area behind their building, and then Public Works has a parking area in front of their building. The staff areas will be secured with swipe access gates. And then the Fleet Services area here will be secured with the fence. And those items, we're planning right now as alternates in the bid, the fence, the access gates. Visitor parking will be accommodated on the site at each of the building locations as And another important component, in one of the pictures I showed you earlier at Fleet Services, there were, there's maybe six or seven spaces in the front of Fleet right now for vehicles that are serviced. This provides a pretty significant area now for vehicles that are serviced, and this area is for vehicles that are waiting to be serviced. Right now, all of that is contained on the two-acre site that is Fleet Services. Some of these spaces are large and angled. That's because we have some pretty large vehicles, like fire trucks and garbage trucks. So those things will fit comfortably on this site. And I mentioned the future fuel station. Currently, there's a fuel station at Water Resource Management, and there's a fuel station on Donahue Drive. As part of the Boykin project that we talked about a few weeks ago, that fuel station will go away on the Donahue Drive and will be relocated here. So this, that's an important component. Right now, we've got it as a bid alternate in the general works package that's due to bid next week. And this fuel station is important because it provides redundancy in our fuel operations. Some years ago, we only had one fueling station, and we had a storm, and we got very nervous. So having two stations has been a good thing for the city. And this fuel station will mirror the one that's at Water Resources. So this is just a floor plan. This is the Public Works Facility or office layout. So standard office, director, we've got space for administrative folks, division managers, locker room, there's a shower. There's a crew station area. Our crew leaders have to do work orders and city works. So there's an area designated for the crews for training or for completing their city works. There's a large and small conference room, and that room can be expanded. It will have a removable wall in the middle, so if Tim needs to have a staff meeting, he can have that in one place. The building also has what we call a hardened structure. The break room is our hardened structure, which is synonymous to a shelter, storm shelter. It's not an official storm shelter, but it's a hardened structure in the event of severe weather. Our crews can go here and be safe, and that is the break room. And then, of course, a pole barn for Public Works. The Environmental Services Building, again, offices, we'll have director, admin, division managers, locker rooms with showers, a crew station. Little different in this building, the crew station room and the break room is the hardened structure. Again, removable wall there in case we need to have a larger meeting. And what you see here, this is the connection, if you remember from the site plan, the connection to Fleet. One of the important things that Katrina mentioned early in the programming, it's difficult to manage people in two buildings. So having Fleet connected to the administrative building is good. In this case, it saved us a lot of money because they will use the same break room, they will use the same conference room. Fleet will have their own locker room space, obviously, for mechanics, but we did realize some savings in connecting the two buildings. So again, a large, these are two conference rooms for training or whatever, and they will also have a removable wall to accommodate any large meetings. Okay? Excuse me. And this is the Fleet space, and I actually showed you the snap of the whole building, which shows you the bays. Fleet has a few offices for administration, the division manager, the parts technician, there's space for centralized fuel and lubricants, there's a space for tire storage. Again, the break room and the conference room space will be shared with the administrative building. But this shows the layout of the bays. Important. So there's a large, what we call a large service bay for the larger vehicles and a small service bay. Oftentimes, mechanics have two vehicles they need to work on at one time. One's usually, say, a police car, one may be a garbage truck. They can have both of them in the bay at the same time. And the good thing about this as well is this bay will allow our very large ladder truck to be in the bay and out of the elements to be worked on. There's also a wash building proposed out back. Often, when vehicles need to be serviced, they need to be cleaned before they're serviced, so there's a wash building included as well. So I mentioned a few minutes ago, our bid packages. One of the things we did in an effort to save time, and during COVID, we've seen material prices escalate exponentially. So we bid the steel package. We did pre-engineered steel buildings, and so we've bid the steel package, and it's still in our queue. But one of the things we did was reduce the size of the building. So if you remember, I mentioned initially, the site plan showed programming the whole site, but what we bid in the steel package was the entirety of the Fleet Building, because we need that space the most, give the base, service base to the mechanics, and half of the Public Works space and half of the Environmental Services space. What that does for us in the future is if we want to expand these steel structures, we just buy more steel. And it's an easy thing to add on to. So that's kind of where we are. The general works package, which includes the remainder of the site work, the grading, the utilities, the improvements on Wire Road, all of the erection of the steel, that is due to bid next week on the 14th, that is next week. And so far, we've got about five bidders who have said they were going to bid, so that's more than we've had in a very long time. One other thing, so Wire Road has to be improved, obviously, as part of this project, and we're doing improvements that are consistent with our design and construction manual. We're adding left turn lane and into the site, and if you're coming from the interstate, we'll have a right turn deceleration lane. And we're also constructing a three-lane entrance. We've worked with Loche Poca Water. They will eventually connect a new water main down to Beehive Road, so we're providing a sleeve for them under the road. They've actually already put it in. The county did some work a few weeks ago. So Loche Poca put the sleeve in for us, so they can connect our site to the new main in the future. And then I'll show you kind of a fly-through of the site. This works. This is entering the Environmental Services space. This is the lobby waiting area. Those are offices to your right, a small nook there for meetings or waiting. And this is what racks could look like in that space. And that's the warehouse on the end of the Environmental Services Admin Building. And that's break room. It's just outdoor seating. So what you saw, the building there was the backside of the Fleet Building.
Allison, when you say trim in half on the steel package, you mean the warehouse space or the office space as well?
The warehouse space. Yes, thank you. And that's the entrance to Public Works.
Now, are those glass doors going down the hallways, is that office space?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's office space. And that's a potential break room layout. That's it. Any questions?
I got a question.
Sure.
Katrina? Y'all gonna kill me. What's the difference in the Public Works and the Environmental Services? I mean, what do y'all, as a different, a long time ago when my daddy used to work for the city, I think all of it was together. What's the division there?
Okay. Environmental Services houses your garbage, recycling, your large bulky trash debris, animal control, and Fleet Services. And I'll let Mr. Woody explain.
Everything else. Right-of-way maintenance in terms of trees, grass cutting, things of that nature, all city facilities, all the maintenance at the facilities, street sweeping, litter, storm drainage, asphalt sidewalks.
Oh, okay.
But you were right, all that used to be together at one time.
It didn't, it was all where Fleet is today.
Yes.
Right.
We have a question as well. I didn't see an overhead crane in the maintenance bays. Was that something that y'all considered and decided wasn't necessary, or?
We will have them, it's just not shown in the fly-through. So we'll have cranes, we'll have lifts, we'll have hoses for lubricants and oils and all that stuff that the mechanics need. But yes, we'll have overhead cranes.
So when we move, if and when we move everything out to this complex, will there still be a recycling center in town?
Yes.
Will that move across the street to the east side?
Yes. So in the Boykin Campus project, the recycling will go to where Fleet is now, and we're still working through what that will look like. But we will have some work, because that site is actually in a flood plain, so we'll have to do some work to get it elevated enough such that it's not an issue. Yes.
Any other questions?
It's nice.
Thank you. Looks good, yes.
I just hope we get some good prices, or we will be delayed.
So you're requesting bids the 14th?
Yes, bids will be received on the 14th.
Yeah, we've got the steel package bid, and I have actually held awarding of that until I can tell you what the total cost is all in one fell swoop. So we'll know on the 14th about where that's landing, and if we're able to get it prepared for the next agenda, we will, but I'll keep you updated. If prices run in a realm that I think is way too far out of whack with the budget, and we see construction costs possibly dropping later in the fall, we and we see construction costs possibly dropping later in the fall, we may delay a few months. We're going to be great stewards of the taxpayer money, and I'm not going to ask you to approve a project that we don't think the budget is adequate for. So we're hopeful, and one of the reasons we use HPM, it gives us a good gauge on where things are. So we're hopeful and fairly confident it will come in at a good level. But if it does not, then we're going to come to you with a recommendation about that and see how you'd like to proceed, or if you'd like to wait, so.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you for your work. Certainly encouraging that we have five bidders. Hope they all stay in the game.
Hope so.
And present a competitive bid next week.
I do want to say with this style of building, that the good news is, is that this can be constructed fairly quickly and efficiently. This isn't near the detail of construction. It's important work, but this building was sitting on a site that had existing fuel tanks in the ground and all kinds of things. That is a fresh site there that needs site work and other things, but this isn't extremely complicated. The fleet services area is the most complicated area that somebody will construct. So that's why I think we've attracted a bunch of good bidders, and I think we have a number of local bidders in that, which is important to us.
Has HPM mentioned a timetable, how long it would take to build?
Allison.
Almost a year, not quite.
If Phillip Dunlap were here, he could say do it in five months, but you know, I think a year is about realistic.
Okay. I won't see Phillip tonight. All right. Questions on the agenda?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to bring something up for the next council.
Hold on just one second, Steve.
I don't have anything.
Any other questions on the tonight's agenda for me and the council members? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dixon.
Okay. I had a constituent reach out to me about wanting to close Payne Street on October 31st from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And in order to do that, it has to have council approval, and so I wanted to bring that up to the committee, the whole, for us to discuss next week if that is something that the council wants to take on.
So there's been some discussion about this, and I think the council all received an email this afternoon. Trick or treat has not been formally announced, correct, but trick or treat is going to be the 31st, which is Sunday night. And that is a big weekend for Auburn, where we have, you know, a high school game on Friday night, and the university plays Ole Miss on Saturday, and then trick or treat. So this is, Ms. Crouch, based on a minimum amount of historical reference, have we ever done this before as far as closing streets off for trick or treat for a neighborhood or street in general?
I've asked, the public safety director, Paul Register, had looked into this. He's discussed with the chief Anderson, and we've even checked with the former public safety director, retired public safety director, Bill James. And historical knowledge at the city, among a lot of staff that's got over 30 years of experience, says that we have not done this for Halloween. We have in the Payne Street area for 4th of July Independence Day activities, and it's been more of an informal closure for a small parade. We have had requests from neighborhoods in the past, larger neighborhoods, and they've just never risen to our knowledge to the council level. Paul, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I believe that sums it up very well.
So council, at this point in time, this is not the time for us to debate or discuss this. We would do that at the next meeting, which will be on September the 21st, I believe. We would set aside time at the committee, the whole, if that is the council's wish for us to have this discussion about the topic of closing Payne Street for a couple hours during trick or treat. Any thoughts in the council as to what your wishes would be moving forward?
Mayor, if I may, I certainly, I'm all for discussing if council wants to do so, but I don't think we can appreciate what our officers will be having to go through that weekend as it is, with all the games. And I'd certainly love to make, help the neighborhood out over there, but we're going to be working them too much anyway. And I don't see any way, and if Director can correct me if I'm wrong, but from past experience, I don't see any way we can have officers, ask our officers, come back out and start manning the streets to close them down for Halloween. If we do it for one, we might do it for all of them when they want to do it. And my biggest concern is those officers, they're going to be extremely tired. And when you get an officer tired and working, that's dangerous. So I wouldn't, for that reason alone, I wouldn't want to see it happen.
Well, Tommy, you make, I mean, certainly that evening will have normal trick or treat activities in our community, plus the downtown activity will be going on. So there'll be a lot of children in costumes with bags that are wandering around our neighborhoods to begin with. So what does the council, once again, does the council want to talk about this at the next meeting during the committee of the whole or not?
I think out of respect for Mr. Dixon, I think any of us would want the same respect. I see no issue with putting it on there. I just would hope that Mr. Dixon doesn't have a whole lot of expectations for what the outcome may be. But I mean, out of respect for a peer wanting something to discuss, I think it's within our responsibilities to at least acknowledge that.
I agree with that.
All right, that's two of y'all. Everybody else okay with that? Okay, all right. So Ms. Crouch, if you could add this to our agenda for committee of the whole in two weeks. And I'm sure we'll hear from some more people before then. Okay, anything from you, Ms. Crouch?
No.
For the agenda? Okay. Do we have a move to adjourn?
A move.
All right, we are adjourned. Lindsay, I believe it's after 7:00 o'clock, so if you'd like to go ahead.
Dawson?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Rizwal?
Here.
Hovey?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Anders?
Here. Would you please stand for the recital of the pledge allegiance, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Today, we're proud to introduce you to our September 2021 Employee of the Month. I have a memorandum here from Greg Nelson, the Chief Information Officer for the City of Auburn, written to Megan McGowan-Crouch, the city manager. It is my honor to nominate Jacob Barker as the Employee of the Month for September 2021. Originally hired in May of 2018 as a computer systems administrator, Jacob hit the ground running and quickly added value beyond the expectations of his position. The department also had an opening for the chief security officer position at the time, and within several months, Jacob was promoted into that position after having demonstrated the technical acumen to be successful in that position. The city's chief security officer carries a number of technical responsibilities, all of which must be meticulously tested beforehand to ensure that there are no side effects that would have a negative impact on the city's operations. While these are important and valuable, the primary focus of the position is on the network security-related duties. The patch of these resources, also along with the server and client operating systems, is paramount to maintaining a secure network. Jacob regularly performs monthly network maintenance to ensure these are applied in a timely fashion, coordinating this work after hours to best minimize the impact on both our employees and citizens utilizing the city's electronic services. Where Jacob particularly shines is in his steadfast focus on new and emergent security issues, which can come from a variety of sources and pose great threat to the city's information stores, systems, and employees. Jacob constantly monitors multiple resources for these emerging threats and reacts in short order to mitigate these threats through whatever means necessary, ensuring that the city is back in a protected position as quickly as possible. While Jacob impresses with his technical expertise and attention to detail, he exemplifies what it means to be a true City of Auburn employee through his professionalism and focus on customer service, never without a positive and friendly attitude. All of these things coupled together surely make Jacob worthy of being celebrated as the September 2021 Employee of the Month. Congratulations, Jacob. Thank you again, and congratulations to Jacob, and thank you to all our employees for the great job that you do. Under Mayor's announcements this morning, I was invited over to the library to spend some time with our favorite mascot, Albie, and many of our small and young families as they finished up storytime. This month is Get Your Library Card Sign Up Month. And so I encourage everybody in our community to go by the Auburn City Library and get your library card. And I would encourage all the city council, if you don't have a library card, and I'm looking at a few of you here, I encourage you to go by and get your library card so that all nine of us can have a library card. But thank you to our library, and what a great time they were having today with the children and the families.
I'm just glad you could find the library room.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. All right. Anna, we need to work with him a little bit. Last week, I was also invited over to Jan Dempsey Art Center for the Adventures in Art Program, with each of our fifth grade schools had children that came over at different days, and they were able to participate with the Sloss Furnace Metal Arts Team, a very interesting process over there, and it was a great hands-on opportunity for our children to be involved. I appreciate our Parks and Rec staff putting that program on each and every year, and it was a lot of fun. I was actually there the day with the Wrightsmoor Road children, so it was a great time. I was invited to participate in an announcement last week for the William Beekner Project. This project will, this project's goal is to raise $15,000 to provide 200 bicycles to underprivileged children in our community. It is sponsored by the Gunners Motorcycle Club, the Lee County District Attorney's Office, Lee County Sheriff's Department, Auburn Police Department, the Auburn Firefighters Association, and Opelika Police Department. If you're looking for an opportunity to make a contribution here in honor of former Auburn Police Officer William Beekner, I encourage you to look into that and consider that. I was also invited recently over to the Auburn Research and Technology Park for the new venture accelerator, as we listened to five different proposals that were given by Auburn University students and grad students about their discoveries and their new projects and programs and companies. It's very fascinating to listen to these young people and how they created these ideas and how they're moving ahead with the support from our people over there at Auburn University, and actually our people here in the city as well. It was very interesting. On a fun note, Auburn was able to beat Opelika barely a couple of weeks ago, and so my friend, Mayor Fuller, will be taking me to lunch somewhere here in the Auburn area next week. It was a great environment over at Opelika a couple of weeks ago. And congratulations to the Auburn Tigers, who are undefeated and ranked third in the state as we go into this weekend. And just this afternoon, we received our latest report from East Alabama Medical Center. Currently, there are 85 individuals in the hospital with COVID, and 23 are on ventilator. I just encourage people again to consider receiving a vaccine, to talk to your family about that, to talk to your doctor and your pharmacist about whether that's the right path for you. It is certainly a difficult time that we're all trying to live in right now. Anybody else on the council would like to make an announcement tonight?
I would.
Yes, ma'am.
There will be a back-to-school fun day in the park at Martin Luther King Park on September 18th, and it'll start at 10:00, and it'll last until, the public is invited, and we are encouraging vaccinations during that time. So please come out and have fun with the kids.
Thank you, Ms. Teo. Anyone else on the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Sure.
Several weeks ago now, I was contacted by a constituent, had a really unique request. He asked for direct contact information for the congressional delegation, so that he could hopefully assist in getting an Afghani national and his family out of Afghanistan. The Afghan, who I won't name for security reasons, is a graduate of West Point and the US Army Ranger School, and after training, he had returned to Afghanistan to fight for his country and for ours. I'm glad to report that the individual and his family made it through the debacle in Kabul, got into the airport, flew to Qatar, and is now in the United States. It's not really clear just how many people in all and who was involved in making all that happen, but our resident, members of our city staff, our congressional delegation and their staffs, some Auburn University personnel, and people will probably never know, were all engaged in the effort. Since then, our local Islamic center is making, has joined in the effort, and attempts to relocate the family to Auburn, which is where they want to reside. So I'm proud to live in a community that has such a dedicated and caring workforce and population and citizens. So thank you to everyone who was involved, and prayers to all those who are still attempting to reach safety and get out of there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you for sharing that with us tonight. Anyone else? Okay. During the committee of the whole, I will reflect back on that. We did appoint Dolly Marshall to the Lee County Youth Development Center Board. We heard a presentation about the future environmental services and public works complex presentation. There was a presentation on that, and then we have decided to have a conversation during our committee of the whole in two weeks regarding the Payne Street closure for trick or treat later on this year. Okay. This time, we'll have Auburn University Communications. How are you doing?
I'm great, how are y'all?
We're doing great.
It's great to be back. I'm happy you took my place last time, and love her. I'm glad to be back, though. Thank y'all so much for having me. I guess y'all may have noticed, Auburn University is back in full swing, all the football traffic this weekend. We got to the point now where a lot of our current students have never been to an Auburn football game as a student, so we are really excited about that win, and we can't wait for the season. This game, this upcoming Saturday, they'll be doing a 9/11 tribute, in tribute to the American military at halftime, so we're super excited for that. And then some things happening on campus. Y'all might have heard of Green Dot Training. In organizations I'm in on campus, I've been through it about three times in different ones, and it's a great training. It's basically, if y'all don't know, encouraging everyone to be a green dot. We don't want any red dots on campus, people who have malicious intent, people who are bystanders to sexual assault and things like that. So we are working on expanding that training to all organizations on campus, not just Greek life, basically everyone, and even people who aren't in organizations. Every student really needs to go through it, so. And then along the same lines, we're doing, Auburn is doing Raise the Bar Training, so the bar is downtown. We want to make sure that those bar owners and bar employees are the biggest green dots, because downtown gets a lot of traction and traffic, and we want to make sure that bad things aren't happening down there. Safety of our students and community members is really priority for us, so. Then along the lines of COVID, we are encouraging every student to get vaccinated. The incentive program is really great. I've joined it about 1,000 times to try and get a parking space. We're giving out great parking spaces. I mean, Dr. Guj would be like, I want to park next to him, so I've applied for it. We, I've gotten a lot of students signing up for that program, basically giving out meal passes and guest passes at football games, things like that. A lot of vaccinated students are signing up for that, so that's great. And then with the city, we are expanding AU-10. I think I might have talked about this a few weeks ago, but basically, students show their Auburn ID Tiger card at places downtown, places in Auburn, they get 10% discount. We really want to encourage students to get out in the community and not just spend their meal plan money, we want them to put money into the city. So that is great. I'm excited. My favorite restaurant, Solcridas, has been added to that list. I got to call them myself. And then also, Auburn SGA, we just had our retreat for Senate and Cabinet, and we worked all day long last Saturday, not this past Saturday, the last Saturday, to work on goals for the fall. And we're super proud to announce that Hey Day will be taking place on October 13th. It's a Wednesday. Y'all might not have heard of this, probably have, being in Auburn, but it dates back to World War II. It's basically a simple way of just saying hey on campus, which is nice. It's contrast, it's a good contrast to people walking silently on campus with music in their ears. So I'm excited for it. We set up tents all over campus, and there's an entire branch of SGA just dedicated to this one day, so we are super excited. And coming off a year like no other, we really want to push this event into the community, not just the campus. So we're going to work on getting the name tags passed out downtown and communities and places in Auburn, so that everyone can be involved. And then also in SGA, Ron on the lawn unfortunately was canceled due to inclement weather, but we are working on mokas with the bears, so. Yes, Ron will be on the lawn. He will just be doing milkshake, I mean, mokas or something with the bear. But Ma'Andre, thank you so much for breakfast the other morning. We love getting to go to city breakfast every month and meet with you, and we love this relationship that we're building with the city. So that's about all I have. Thank you so much, and we're eagle.
That's great. Good report. We appreciate it. Early on in our council's tenure, many of us went through Green Dot Training. We gave, it was about an hour and a half one evening over at the city meeting room on Tishner, and it was very interesting and very rewarding, and I'm not so sure, we might need a refresher course, but it's very valuable training. We might need a refresher course, but it's very valuable training. I encourage anybody to look into it if they're interested. Okay, citizens' communications on items on tonight's agenda. This is only for items that are on our agenda tonight. There are a couple of things on our agenda. Do have public hearings, and if you'd like to speak to that, I'll ask you to wait till then, but if you'd like to speak to the council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to city manager's communications.
Mayor, I don't have any. If you're ready, we'll roll right into the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like C-7.
C-7, yes. Anyone else?
C-6.
C-6. Any other item you'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll start with C-6.
Right. Item 8C-6 authorizes a contract with D&amp;J Enterprises for the fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Resurfacing Project in the amount of $279,389. The contract is for Slaughter Avenue, Foster to Boykin, Stub Avenue, and Boykin Street.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. Discussion of questions, Ms. Taylor.
I just, just want to ask, I mean, how is, it said the Community Development Block Grant funding is, I guess, for resurfacing, so D&amp;J is the one that's going to resurface it? What is this?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. They are, we, we go out to bid for these services. The Community Development Block Grant overall budget is approved by the council in its given fiscal year, and, and there's always money allocated to resurfacing, and so this typically resurfaces. It can only be used for, for streets in neighborhoods that meet a low and moderate income criteria per federal government regulations, and so we take some of the resurfacing that needs to be done and utilize block grant funds for it. So that's, that's all this is doing.
Okay, so it's just separate money from the other community block?
It, it's actually in the overall federal annual allocation that we get. This is just, we take a portion of our annual allocation and allocate it toward resurfacing. But again, it cannot be done for any areas that are not considered low and moderate income by a federal housing standard.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8C-7 authorizes a contract with D&amp;J Enterprises for intersection improvements to include turn lanes and the installation of a traffic signal at South College Street, also known as US 29, and Shell Tumor Parkway in the amount of $385,393.
Move for approval. Second. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Dawson?
I'd just like to thank Megan and her staff for finally making this happen. We've been working on this for a long time. I know, at least I've been involved for at least five or six years now, and it's a dangerous intersection, and been needing it for a while, and I'm just so pleased to finally see this on the agenda, and thank you for the hard work.
We appreciate that. I also was anticipating that you might ask our city engineer as to when this would get started, so I have her well-prepared for that, so I would like for her to answer the question if the council would so desire. They said please, Allison. Thank you.
D&amp;J said they're going to get right on it.
I just wanted to be sure you heard it here.
On that note, we do now have lights, streetlights, from I-85 to South College Street, so that is a big plus, and you're just hitting the home run. I mean, Megan, I don't know what you're doing, but.
We're working on it. We just need a bucky's.
Yeah, we do. But I'm very pleased to see that as well. It really helps the area out there.
Good deal.
All right, any other comments or questions in the council? I agree with you, chief. That's a very dangerous intersection. Look forward to being safer in the future. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
A moved. Second.
All right, have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda carries.
Mayor, under ordinances this evening, item 9A adopts the 2021 International Building Codes, the 2020 National Electrical Code, along with the proposed amendments. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and a public hearing is required.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
We, we've, just one second. Correct that.
Just move and.
Just moved to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion from the council?
Did we have any input from our stakeholders since our last meeting?
We have not received any additional input at City Hall, and there is a memo in your packet that details a lot. A lot of work was done by the staff to make sure we had reached out to as many stakeholders as possible to garner feedback and input before we placed this on the agenda, so I'm hopeful that that's one of the reasons why we haven't received. And then, John Hoare, have we received any additional?
We haven't received any. Initially, we talked to about 100 different stakeholders and met with them over three months to get their input ahead of time, and so we could balance out suggestions of things they had.
I did have a chance to reach out to a few, few interested parties, and they said the same thing, so I appreciate John and his, his department doing so. They mentioned him by name, so appreciate that, seeking that input just to kind of hit anything off of the pass.
Good, and that is our goal, is when we're doing things like this, is to communicate with stakeholders and do the best that we can before it gets here, so that they're aware. We do not try to sneak, sneak things up on people intentionally, so thank you.
Thank you also, John. I was the one who denied unanimous consent. I just wanted to give the community one last time a look at this, but I appreciate all the efforts that you and your staff made early on to make this, make them aware of the potential changes. All right, no further discussion. We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Andrea Tobin. My address is 1123 Northwood Drive. Tonight, we talked a lot about our football games and how fun they are and how awesome Auburn is doing. We've got fans gathered by the hundreds screaming, yelling, cheering on their team.
Ma'am, is this about the International Building Code?
No.
Okay, that's what we're.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought you were opening up to public. My apologies. I will be back.
Yeah, it's public hearing for that topic.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I misunderstood you. I will be back up shortly, then.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Does anyone like to address the city council regarding this topic? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the council? All right, Lenzie, with the roll call.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9C authorizes the installation of two stop signs in Camden West Phase 2. Unanimous consent is necessary.
Introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. See anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seen, hear, none. Is there any discussion from the council? Okay, roll call, Lenzie.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9C authorizes the installation of two stop signs in Camden West Phase 2. Unanimous consent is necessary.
Introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion second. See anyone in the council have a problem moving forward on vote on this this evening? Seen, hear, none. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Mayor, under resolutions this evening, item 10A is a request to amend Comp Plan 2030 by adopting the U.S. Highway 280 Focus Area Study text and future land use plan amendments. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the text amendments and recommended approval of the map amendments by a vote of eight to one at its July 8, 2021, meeting. This item was postponed from the August 17, 2021, city council meeting. A public hearing is required.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion second. For the public hearing, is there any discussion from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend the proposed future land use map as follows. Number one, change a parcel located along Heath Road, Alabama 147, from limited residential to rural, as shown on Exhibit A. And secondly, to change a parcel located along Shelton Mill Road from master plant use, excuse me, master plant mixed use to low-density residential, as shown on Exhibit B, which is in the two exhibits or pages 14 of 19 of the map and 18 of 19 of the map. And I have a handout for each council member so that you can graphically see what, what we're referring to.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we do have a motion second. Why don't we take time to receive the, the handout from Mr. Griswold?
And we've also placed on your screens, up on the big screen, and then, and then the council screens went blank, but here you go, these amendments.
Kelly, if you would, could you elaborate on your?
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah.
On the first page of the handout that I just gave you, and on the screen, it shows an area outlined in yellow, which has been recommended by the, by the staff in the plan to be changed from rural, rural to limited residential. Limited residential would allow for one-acre lots. So my rationale for making this request is that one-acre lots basically constitutes about 30-plus to 40 homes, each of which would probably generate up to two or, or say, an average of two vehicles per commute, and all 40 of those households would be exiting under a single narrow exit curb cut onto Heath Road. Now, Heath Road intersects Highway 280, about a quarter mile down the road, so the, the amount of traffic that would be leading from that development, if it were to become limited residential, is potentially a safety issue in my view. And there's already a backup on Heath Road trying to get onto Highway 280, or as, as it is. The other reason I would recommend the change is that that area is currently in the, is currently rural in the county, and if it were annexed, it would be 40 lots or so, approximately 40 lots, all on septic systems. There is no sanitary sewer system provided by the city that could be accessed by that area. So I, again, I think that that might be a sanitary issue. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that it is a violation of our policy to annex subdivisions in our planning jurisdiction that are solely serviced by septic systems. Is that correct?
Would have to defer to the planning staff on that and the city engineer.
Could you repeat that, please?
If we were to annex that area, it's, it has a requirement, all those will be septic lots, and within our planning jurisdiction, subdivisions that we annex or that we oversee under our planning jurisdiction, we're not allowed to annex subdivisions that have solely septic service. Is that correct?
I think the way that it's written, it's, if you're going to be in our planning jurisdiction but not in the city limits, you've got to be three-acre lots, period.
Right.
If you're going to be in the city limits and you do have appropriate zoning of, that allows one-acre lots, you are eligible to be on a septic system.
Okay, so, right, so.
If sewer is not available. Now, if sewer is available, that's a different situation.
Thank you for clarifying that.
In this instance, and from what you're saying, that that is correct, that there is no sewer available in this area.
That is correct. Yeah, all right, thank you for, for clarifying that for me. The, the second map amendment, I'm going to defer to Councilwoman Witten to provide the rationale for that. And the, just so you know, these amendments here, these two amendments are a joint submission by the two of us.
Right, thank you, Kelly. In addition to what Mr. Griswold said about the Exhibit A, is that there were notes about a transition from one-acre lots to, to rural, and we, we feel that the surface homes, properties, are the transition of the one-acre lots to the rural, so that's an additional thought process there. And then regarding the property, the parcel that's on Shelton Road on the west side of Shelton Mill Road, that stretch from 280 all the way down is either rural or residential neighborhood preservation, and I just think it would be a disservice to that neighborhood to insert potential commercial uses there, even though I understand it would have to be approved and through a mixed plan. I also don't believe that Shelton Mill Road can take on the, the additional traffic that would come with a highly dense development at that area in this stage. I met this morning with the neighbor, neighbors of Creek Ridge Trail who have to access Bridlewood Drive, which is not even, at some points, depending on the weather, a passable road. So I think from a transportation infrastructure and in keeping with the characteristics of that side of Shelton, that it would be our best interest to go with the, the recommendation of a low-density residential or the amendment of a low-density residential for that side.
All right. Any comments or questions from the council, specifically on the amendments, please?
If we adopt a parcel, a parcel A, green, what would be the density for rural in that area, for residential?
Rural, if, if, well, a couple of things. This is a land use plan, so this is, this is a guide. The zoning, if it's not in the city limits, is not zoned anything. If it is, it automatically, when annex comes in, is rural, but rural requires three-acre lots.
Three-acre lots, okay.
Minimum.
Yeah. Any other questions, thoughts from the council? Yes, sir.
What, what type of feedback did you get from your constituents out there on, on these two proposed changes?
The feedback that I received on the, on the first one, on Exhibit A, was predominantly, well, actually, all the, everything I got was exclusively, do not allow this to transition to limited residential. Now, some of the feedback I got were people who were outside the study area but are still residents of Ward 2 that are further north on Heath Road, that they have to transit through the area to get back to Highway 280. I didn't receive anybody who, any information from, or input from anyone that advocated the change to limited residential. Thank you. I don't know if the city did or not.
That's a great question, Ms. Crouch. Could, could the staff kind of speak to, I know we had the public meeting on the 26th, some of the responses.
And they can, they can speak to that, and you had, and just, you know, there's a memo included with, with this agenda item, as well as another one the council got from the planning director that spoke a little bit to it, but Steve, please.
Yeah, you do have a memo that Logan Kip provided to you, and he assembled all the comments that were provided in the cards and things of that nature, so if you don't mind, I'll let Logan respond directly to that.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, so we did have a second open house on the 26th. We had a little over 30 residents attend. Twenty-three of those did not attend the virtual open house, so there was, you know, a net gain of residents, so that was helpful. We mailed letters out, put banners out, sent letters to the homeowner associations nearby. And overall, you know, most of the residents that attended didn't have a positive or negative, just kind of accepting, understanding that growth is occurring in this part of town. The residents that did speak out against the killed property, about half a dozen, no, you know, no, the property owner obviously has his own desires for the property, but the majority of feedback from that area was not to allow limited residential.
Thank you, Logan.
Yep.
Shelton Mill Road, we maintain, or is that allowed?
Is we maintain it up to the 280 intersection, Allison, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have any plans to do any upgrades or improvements on Shelton Mill?
Well, you just saw one section's been resurfaced. It's slated to finish the resurfacing if it's not been finished. Has it been finished? You're looking at me.
It's just patching.
Yeah, they patch, though, you'll see long, we call them overlays, really. You'll see long overlays where we had a lot of rutting, and so some of that has been done. But we do not have in what I would even call the 10-year range right now, plans like we do for Donahue, North Donahue and other roads to Y. And that being said, there is a tremendous amount of development activity that is likely to occur in the next two years in this area. You're going to see big moves on master plans and other things, and that will, we will relook at all of that when those come. But until those plans come to fruition and are adopted ultimately by the council and staff gets a look at infrastructure needs and requirements, we just haven't gone there yet. I don't believe our citywide traffic study indicated there was a need at this time, but that is likely to change.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, at this time, I do want to, I want to open a public hearing regarding this. If somebody would like to speak to the council regarding these amendments specifically, please come forward and give your name and address for the record, just on these amendments, please.
Is it okay to take the mask off to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. My name is Ann Priester Bennett. I live at 7,001 Stonewall Road, and I own property adjoining this, well, not exactly adjoining, but nearby, that is very much going to be affected. I want to remind the council that when they look at city limit maps, there's property along Stonewall Road where I live, but as you go further down Stonewall Road, you get to Gregory Glen. So there is an area of a disconnect of property between Stonewall Road and Gregory Glen Road that is in the Auburn city limits. You have to look pretty far on your map, it's not sitting up there, but in your Auburn city limits map, it's there. So it makes sense that this area, between the area along Stonewall Road and Gregory Glen, is at some point going to be annexed into the city limits. So I'm expecting that at some point, I'm aging, my kids or whatever will be coming asking for annexation. But this, this is a fourth-generation farm where I live, and it is absolutely rural. We don't even have pizza delivery, okay? So just so you understand, it is rural. The police service is across 280. Everything that serves that area is distant for us. And we are rural, and I'm asking you to keep this, the three-acre lot size rural, and not make an exception for one little piece of property just because there's a mess along Highway 147. And those of you who've ridden there and seen the 30-something mailboxes already there, that you have to stop, 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 as you're trying to turn off a 280 to go home or to come, when mail, school bus, trash, et cetera. I'd love to see the property owners get annexed, I think that's the future, but I'm asking for you to annex it in the current rural zone and keep the three-acre lot minimum, since we're absolutely all septic tank and most everybody is on well water north of a good bit of Heath Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
My name is Philip Shays. I live 7,519 Stonewall Road, so I'm just north of this area. And honestly, my biggest concern and what I've heard from the neighbors on Stonewall Road is the traffic that's there already on 147. I just see that getting so much worse. And it's one of the things that once it gets annexed in, if it is at one-acre lots, I see that being a problem that won't go away. And that is my biggest concern on this, is just thinking about the traffic going forward and how that would be handled if that was the case. So I do agree, I agree, that leaving it at three-acre lots would avoid that quite a bit. So that's just what I wanted to voice on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Kevin Bennett, and I live at 7,001 Stonewall Road. There's some history on this. In driving into the meeting tonight, I counted the mailboxes in the last half-mile of a state highway before an intersection with a US highway, 30 mailboxes. It shouldn't have been that way. It really is an Exhibit A of poor planning, where we just let things kind of get away from us. And as I moved into Auburn, crossed 280, came down North College Street, the next mile and a half, there were only three mailboxes. Some better development, accessing the state highway through subdivision entrances and so forth. This has kind of gotten away from us up on the north side, and it is indeed very rural. You have the fire department, the police department, city parks are four to five miles away, city parks are green spaces, no sanitary sewer, and doubt there'll be any in a long, you know, long way. You could, you could do it, but you're going to have to pump some, I think. It is, it really is rural, very rural. And in terms of your amendment, I really plead with you to keep the zoning as it is, it was thought out well. I don't understand why this parcel would even be in the study plan. It doesn't join Highway 280. It does feed in and impact it, but it was an addition after the study plan began, and I support its exclusion from. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the council? Okay, is the council ready to vote on these amendments? We're voting just on these amendments right now. This will be a voice vote, okay? All right, all in favor of these amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the amendments carry. So now we will talk about the entirety of the study, the plan, that includes the amended plan. Correct, Ms. City Manager?
Right, it's the main motion with the amendments. Now, that's under your consideration.
Okay, so we're back to the main motion at this time?
Absolutely.
Okay. So at this time, I will open a public hearing related to the main motion, which is the entirety of the 280 corridor focus area study. Anybody who'd like to speak to the city council regarding this, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. See, no one? We'll close the public hearing. See, anyone on the council would like to make a comment or have a question regarding this, the US Highway 280 corridor focus area study?
I would just like to thank the staff for their additional time and the additional open house. I know that was a full day, and I think it was warranted, and I think it gave an additional number of people an opportunity to learn about it. And I just want to say thank you for your time and efforts in that.
I echo that sentiment. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Okay, now we'll vote on the entire amendment, the amended, the amended plan, okay? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. This is your opportunity to talk to the city council about anything. We'll please ask you to come forward and give your name and address for the record. Remember that you are speaking to the city council, you're not speaking to anyone on the staff, and you have three minutes. And Ms. Tobin, we'll start with you. You might.
Andrea Tobin, 1123 Northwood Drive. So anyway, my concern, going back to our football games, hundreds of students there, high school games, college games, hardly a mask in sight. And I know I've ran this gamut with you before, and so have many parents. It seems to me that the only people who are expected to mask up at all times are our K through 12 children. I would love a reasonable explanation from anyone, or specifically you, mayor, as to why it is only our children who have to be masked for all things, all day long, at school. But we can crowd football games and not a mask in sight? I would just like an explanation to the hypocrisy, please.
Ms. Tobin, that is the decision of the school board. I explained that the night that many other people joined you up here, what our role is with the school board, and that is the determination of the board and the superintendent.
Okay, I understand that. I would just, you know, like to hear thoughts on hypocrisy in general from our leaders in this community. But if you don't, then I won't waste any more of your time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Susan Bolt, 1188 East University Drive. Mayor, on our July 20th meeting, you had asked me to submit some additional questions that I had to Ms. Crouch for answering on the short-term rental ordinance that y'all passed. And I have done that, and I just wanted to make sure that she had received that request, since I didn't get a response back acknowledging the email.
Yes, I received the request. The questions are numerous and have to be fully vetted with our legal counsel due to pending litigation, so there will be no response until all things have been vetted with our legal counsel.
Do you have any idea when that might take place?
I do not. I do not, meaning they are, we are in progress providing information to legal counsel. They will thoroughly vet everything and determine which questions, if not all questions, we can answer. That's going to be up to them.
Do you anticipate at all whether I'll get any answers to the questions? Or I know some of my questions were, where can I find the ordinance in its entirety? So I wasn't completely relying on y'all to provide me information. I don't understand why some of those questions can't be answered.
Again, due to pending litigation, I cannot respond to any of those questions until our legal counsel has reviewed all of them and staff's responses, and will determine which ones we can answer. If not all of them, I'm not sure yet how many we can or can't answer.
So how would a citizen go about knowing what ordinance they must abide by if it's not available for us to see?
It is in its entirety on the city's website, as well as part of the zoning ordinance.
That seems pretty easy to me. So do you know if I'll get any other answers to my questions?
Again, I do not due to pending litigation.
Very good, thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I am Michael Halpern. I live at 913 St. Circle. Thank you, Ms. Crouch, for your communication to me today about the role the Economic Development Department has played to provide information about vaccination sites to local industries. Perhaps the council has also been made aware of this role, but for the past two months, there has not been any comments about COVID-19 from any member despite the enormous spread of the Delta variant in our communities. The hospital news reported tonight by Mayor Anders is depressing. This is the fourth consecutive council meeting that I have attended, and the council has not yet addressed COVID-19. What do we know from our elected council members who represent their individual districts? Nothing but silence. None of you have spoken about the Delta variant at the last several meetings. It is, is it unfair to say that while the hospital fills up and the Auburn city schools have quarantined students and employees, that you are simply unaware? Council members, what would you like to say to Auburn citizens about the spread of COVID-19? And what legal remedies do you suggest? The citizens of Auburn who put you into leadership positions deserve to know. Most of you, if not all of you, have spoken about short-term rentals and apartment heights at nauseam, but not a peep about life and death or serious illness facing Auburn citizens due to the Delta variant, with more tragedy likely to come. What's keeping you silent? Does football and business interests have your tongues? With thousands of visitors entering Auburn this Saturday and six more home games with only masks, you have nothing to say? Pardon me, please, but that's not ignorance of reality, but serious abdication of your responsibility. There are dozens of legal remedies that you could propose. Nonetheless, nonetheless, I am hopeful that the draft pilot project to voluntarily, yes, voluntarily vaccinate employees will be acceptable to the council, and your silence will fade away. Auburn citizens are afraid. Some have lost loved ones, and many more know someone still struck. They need to hear from you, and in all due respect, they need to hear from you now. Thank you for your attention. I hope I have moved the needle a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Halpern. Anyone else?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to Mr. Halpern.
Absolutely.
I did notice that there was correspondence shared between the city manager and Mr. Halpern today. I just did not get to read the exchange. Maybe you could paraphrase the content of your response today, if you would indulge me, city manager.
Sure thing, Councilman Parsons. The, Dr. Halpern was referring to a pilot program for Auburn Industries and vaccinations, and what I was corresponding with him about, that he would not have been aware. We do much with our Auburn Industries and have great relationships with them, but they are private companies that have their own corporate criteria, among other things. Beginning in March of 2020, we worked hand-in-hand through our economic development staff and industrial development board to protect our industrial jobs, the people who work there, and the production that goes on in Auburn that is important, including that of vials, vaccine vials for Moderna. So much is going on in the industrial base. We initially went through a, establishing and working on a testing program for COVID that also then morphed into OSHA safety and ways we could get employees back to work, that then morphed into, as the vaccine became available, and the city took the bull by the horns and partnered with the hospital and the city of Opelika to get the vaccine clinic going. We had our industries heavily involved in that. East Alabama Medical Center was in lockstep with the city along the way, providing advice to industries, and we were setting up testing centers and doing anything we could. And so some of our correspondence today was just giving Dr. Halpern a limited view of that. But to the vaccines, we went on to say that, you know, there were other programs. Some industries had, East Alabama Medical Center come directly to the industry to do vaccines. We have two companies that require vaccines for all their employees. We have a number of other programs going on, but we also have corporate requirements and corporal, corporate culture established by the industries themselves, and they do make their own decisions with regard to COVID. But we have been working with them to provide any support we can, and if they needed access to vaccines or medical advice from East Alabama Medical Center, we've been there to help facilitate that.
And may I ask, have we had a positive response from our industries?
Absolutely, they're great partners of ours.
Employees vaccinated and so on?
Absolutely, and a lot of them have offered their own corporate incentives to do so. But again, that has been up to the, to the individual company. I do, do feel strongly that if our staff felt there was another way to move the needle, they would have proposed it in terms of, our economic development team is experienced, and obviously I spent 23 years working in that department, so I'm keenly familiar. And I'm proud of the relationship we have with our industries and our industrial base in general, and I'm also proud of the fact that we make Moderna vials in Auburn, and CIO has been a great partner of ours and our small help from Auburn, Alabama. But we also do have to leave individual matters to the companies themselves in terms of their ultimate choice for them and their employees, and we have done so with respect, but been there as a resource.
I just read with interest his, Mr. Halpern's policy proposal that, that, you know, without, with ensuring that employees know that this would be all voluntary and incentivized in some way. I thought it was at least the beginnings of an interesting conversation, but as I listened to you, it seems as though that conversation has already occurred.
Yes.
Would that be fair to say?
It has, and that's where it mirrors closely a lot of things that Dr. Halpern had suggested that we do, we had already done. And again, those things started in March of 2020 when we didn't have a vaccine, but that morphed in. that morphed in that direction. And still every day, there are communications going on, and anything we can do to help our industries achieve their vaccination goals and keep their employees safe, we certainly strive toward.
So there's an ongoing conversation happening?
Yes, absolutely. We're in direct contact with our industries frequently, especially through our workforce development division.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council?
Look, I just want to say this, too. And, you know, actually, when I'm having events, like the one on Saturday, we have, we have tables set up for vaccination. They have on-site vaccination, and everybody's, you know, pretty much being real cautious about this pandemic. So I don't think it's, you know, it's left up to the individuals, really, to take the vaccination. We cannot force them to take the vaccination, but it's out there, it's being encouraged. There's not an event that I, that I have, and I, you know, I have a bunch of them going on. And there is always a table set up, and it's on-site for vaccination. Even if you don't want to do it on-site, you can register. Even with the one I'm having on the 18th, there would be a booth set up for people to sign, or they can do on-site. So it's not overlooked. So, you know, I, you know, I don't, I mean, I'm quite sure that everybody's not everything. So a lot of times, you may not know what's going on. So I just want to throw that out there, that, you know, I think that we're doing pretty good in our community, in our communities, to make sure that people know that they have the options of being vaccinated. But that's all we can do, we can put it out there, and hopefully, hope people will sign up to take the vaccination, or even take it on-site.
Thank you, Connie. All right, anyone else like to address the council? Anyone? Any further comments from the council? Okay, do I have a move adjourned?
I moved.
We are adjourned.